All this meeting of the Monterey Planning Commission to order for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Vice Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
President.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
President.
And Commissioner Milich.
Awesome.
Great. We have a quorum. I'll announce the staff members present. We have Community Development Director Cole, Associate Planner Sabdo, Associate Planner Bugart, Acting City Engineer Hardy, Interim Public Works Director Rennie, and myself Recording Secretary Barrera.
Thank you. And you explain for the people who are calling in?
Sure. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that collects you, connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey. It's also streamed on Comcast Channel 25. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icentermonterey.org. Since this meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. Today's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. Once again, today's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To write public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To write comments by phone. Um, to to provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To write comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
Okay, thank you, Erica. We're going to go to item number one on our agenda, which is consent items. First of all, is there anybody that wants to pull our minutes from our last meeting off the consent agenda? Okay. Any comments on the consent? Excuse me. There you go. Comments on the minutes?
Just one quick comment. And first of all, hats off to Jennifer for doing such a great job of taking the minutes and listening to the comments and summarizing them in a way that is just makes perfect sense. Everyone gets a few sentences and everyone's comment is really succinctly summarized. On the bottom of page two, think that there just might be a word missing or something. The very last sentence, former wireless subcommittee member Susan Nine differed from those of other attorneys and suggested Carmel required them to provide a gap. Not quite getting the meaning of that sentence. There could be maybe a little reworking of it.
Okay, noted.
Yeah, I think we could probably change that to significant gap analysis. I think that's probably her intent.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as adapted. As changed.
Okay, there's a motion. A second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote on this?
Sure. Vice Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Mike.
Commissioner Doc.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yeah.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved as amended with a vote of six.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to public comments. So this is a point of our meeting where the public may speak for maximum three minutes on any subject which is within our jurisdiction and which is not on the agenda today. Any person or group desiring to bring up an item to the attention of the commission may do so during public comments or by addressing a letter of explanation to the commission. Hey, is there anybody that, yes, please step up, stay. Tell us who you are.
Bush, thank you. I'm Jean Rash, and I'm representing the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. And I just wanted to, I sent a letter. I don't know whether you got it, but I'll read it. It's about a case that just was published admittedly from New York, so not controlling, but certainly encouraging on the wireless ordinance situation. To the planning commissioners, a July 29th, 2022 decision was just published from the United States District Court, Eastern District of New York, Extranet Systems Incorporated plaintiff versus Village of Flower Hill. The judge ruled that the village's denial of small cell applications was legal and reasonable. In a landmark legal decision, Judge Frederick Block, Senior United States District Judge for the Eastern District of New York, found that the Village of Flower Hill, New Jersey was justified in denying the application of Extranet, acting as an agent for Verizon Wireless to place eighteen small cell antennas in the village. The judge quoted from the 1996 Telecommunications Act citing the provision that, quote, "Nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government or instrumentality thereof over decisions regarding placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities," end quote. He noted that other courts have found the act to be, quote, "In many important respects, a model of ambiguity or indeed even self-contradiction," end quote. Nevertheless, he reasoned, "A plain reading of the text supports the claim by the village that it has acted legally." Most importantly, the judge ruled that the provisions of the 1996 Act do not necessarily apply to the new uses of wireless to provide broadband and other services. Quote, "Improved capacity and speed are desirable and no doubt profitable goals in the age of smartphones," he wrote, "but they are not protected by the act." This case is an important moment for all those working to limit the deployment of wireless technology in our neighborhoods and homes. And I give you a site to the judge's decision in my letter. Please continue, and thank you for all your great work. You're our first line of defense and a great one. Please continue to press for the most protective wireless ordinance in our neighborhoods with standards clearly outlined for proving coverage gaps and need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name is Jeanie Ferrara. I am a Realtor and homeowner in the Monterey Vista neighborhood. So as our president of Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, Jean Rash, just mentioned the US District Court Extranet Systems versus Village of Flower Hill. The judge Frederick Block found the village justified in denying the application of Extranet. We have had Extranet here applying for applications in the past, in the recent past. Hundreds of homeowners showed up here hoping to pose the thirteen cell towers that you decided against, that the city council decided against. The strongest possible ordinance needs to recognize the full extent, the law grants to local authority. The focus needs to be on what you can do, not on what you can't do, which is what you inaccurately heard from BBNK, the law firm that the city has been working with. Your hands are not tied. And Carmel has been working very hard to draft an ordinance with lawyer Andrew Campanelli. And I beg you to wait to see their ordinance and follow their lead, not just go along with what BBK has been telling you. The homeowners of Monterey don't want cell towers in their residential neighborhoods lowering their property value and possibly affecting their health and the environment. So I thank you for all the good work that you do for the city of Monterey and for the homeowners, and I implore you to wait and not accept this draft of the ordinance and wait for Carmel's. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. Thank you.
All right, looks like we're on. So I'd like to introduce myself. My name is John Stackpole. I'm a local physician and bicyclist. I've lived in the community for close to twenty years now. And I would like, I have a little handout. I'm going to pass it around. Today is the issue of motorized vehicles on the Monterey rec path. The first part of this starts off with a little discussion of what happened to me recently on the rec path, and you can see some of the results of that. But it turns out that I was struck by an individual riding what is loosely defined as called a Super 73. This is an eighty-pound vehicle with 2,000 watts of power. That is more than any professional cyclist has ever documented producing on a bicycle. This vehicle is sold as an e-bike, pedal-only, twenty mile an hour limit. However, the company advertises that it can easily be unlocked with the app to allow full throttle capabilities, twenty-eight miles per hour. Okay? I can tell you that hitting this thing feels like getting hit by a car. Okay? I was thrown. I was injured. The force of the collision not only injured me, but buckled the tubes of my steel bicycle. And this is on our Monterey rec path, very close to Fisherman's Wharf, about a hundred feet from the sign that specifically prohibits motorized bicycles on the path. At the time of the incident, I was not fully aware of the law. I know that I'd read that maybe e-bikes were now allowed because of local business interests who want to be able to rent these machines to tourists. So I did not pursue it at the time. I let the individual leave, okay, after he refused to give me his information. When I spoke with my fellow cyclists, they said, "That's not a legal bike on the path." And I researched it, and indeed, it's not legal. Okay? But it's not clear. I had to come to the city planning department, talk to Matthews, who was able to confirm with me that that's not legal. So let me read to you. From the Monterey, City of Monterey website, "The recreational trail is a pedestrian bicycle trail. Walkers, joggers, bicycles, and skaters are permitted." Okay, there's no mention of motorized bicycles allowed on the rec path. The official posted sign contradicts this. Okay? It's my strong opinion that this is a sentinel event. We are lucky that it is I, a full-grown adult, who was struck by this vehicle. And I could very well be dead, paralyzed, traumatic brain injury. But what if this had been a three-year-old child with no protective gear? What would the result could have been much worse? "I would like to make a call to action for the city of Monterey to begin immediate enforcement of its current city code on the rec path. Changes must be made to the code," and they should be made, may I have ten more seconds, twenty seconds? "Move the mind towards safety for all users and strictly enforce said code. These regulations must be readily available and widely posted at entrances to the path. In 1997, the city of Monterey, in its adoption of the mission purpose of the recreation trail, states it is primarily intended as a use for recreation, not a thoroughfare for commuting. I would suggest a safe and protected alternate pathway for bicycles, both human-powered and electric, be created across Monterey County. Currently, bicycles are prohibited through the tunnel on Del Monte. The only viable option is to take Pacific and merge onto Lighthouse. I traveled this route during early COVID. And many times drivers even took to lowering their windows to their pleasure." That's all I have to say. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
May I leave some promotional materials for
Yes, please.
And I do also have a picture of the individual. Well, it has the electric bicycle. It does have the individual in there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, I thank you greatly for your attention to this, and I hope that we can bring the rec path back to a place that's safe for all Monterey citizens.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we're in our public hearing part of our agenda, is item number three, which is Consider 640 Wave Street Use Permit Application. UP 220106 to allow commercial recreation and entertainment use.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was there any comments on the phone?
Oh, that's a good question. Did we have any hands raised?
There are five attendees, but there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So back on to, let's see, the applicant is Mark Lucas, Fly Drive LLC, and the property owner is Canary Row Company. C2 zoning district. See, commercial plan designation exempt from SEQA, and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, vice chair and commissioners. This afternoon, you're considering a use permit for a commercial recreation and entertainment use. And staff is recommending ultimately that you adopt a resolution approving the use permit. The project site, as I mentioned, is located at 640 Wave Street. It's the previous site of the IMAX Theater, so I think probably many of you are probably remember that site. So the project is conversion of the existing closed IMAX theater, cafe, and retail space into an amusement ride cafe arcade and retail space. The use classification in our zoning code is commercial recreation and entertainment. The proposed hours of operation are from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. They'll have up to twenty employees, but they'll be on various shifts. And the cafe will serve beer and wine type forty ABC license. And this is a example of the proposed ride. If any of you've been to Disneyland's soaring ride, you, instead of sitting in a movie theater, you file in and the seats are on a platform that rotates. So it actually feels like it syncs with what you're looking at on the screen. And for example, it can appear like you're flying through a canyon, and it gives you the experience, even though you're just moving a little bit, that you're experiencing some outdoor environment or interior area. And so the platform moves in sync with video and audio, and it gives you the illusion of being in flight. So many of you may remember this curved screen right here is right where the old IMAX screen was, and we did have a few hundred seats here for the IMAX building. And you can see that this is the proposed new location of the ride. So the building has an existing recreation trail entrance and an existing wave street entrances. Those are proposed to continue to be there. The proposal includes a very small cafe place. You can see it right here in the corner with a few chairs. There's some retail where they can sell t-shirts and other types of items. And then there's ride ticketing and pre-show queuing area within that ground floor of the building. The ride exits to the basement level. And in the basement level, you'll find an arcade and various concessions where you can buy sodas and different types of drinks. The building will need to be opened on its side to accommodate the large mechanical equipment that will be installed for the ride. And this is previously where the building was opened in order to transport or install the IMAX theater and all of its equipment. So this is a previous hole in the existing building that will be repaired. So the findings for approval, the first finding that the proposed use isn't in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. This isn't our commercial area of our general plan. Commercial recreation and entertainment uses are allowed by use permit. It will actually be less intense than the previous use, the IMAX theater that could seat approximately a hundred people, where this will sit closer to thirty people. We also look to see if it'll be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the area. We find the proposed use consistent with the long-term commercial use in the area. There are general plan policies to encourage and maintain a strong economic base. This building has sat vacant for quite a while, so it'll be nice to see it come back online. There will be basic service and employment opportunities and an improvement to the district. And the use is required to comply with any specific conditions for that use. We are requiring, as we do with all establishments that sell alcohol, ABC training for employees before they sell alcohol, and that we come back with a twelve-month review to the planning commission. And that's fairly typical for us, for businesses that sell alcohol, as we like to review it within twelve months to see how that's going. So in summary, we're recommending you adopt a resolution approving the use permit. We did receive a letter from the member of the public that was made available to this afternoon. Ms. Dwight requested that the use permit contain a condition of approval that parking passes be purchased for the employees in the city parking garage to prevent possible employee parking in the uphill neighborhood. I did check with our parking division. They can sell annual, semi-annual, quarterly, or even part-time parking passes. So if you have someone that only works two or three days a week, there's a special parking pass for that type of individual. We've historically not really required that as part of use permits for reuse of existing buildings. We have done it for brand-new buildings or new uses, but if For reuse of existing buildings, we have done it for brand new buildings or new uses, but if you're changing out. One retail shop to another retail shop, we've not required the new retail shop owner to. Um, pay for parking passes. So that would be um, a change in sort of how we've approached. Um, previous use permits. I just want to point that out. But you can require it if um, the planning commission um, provides findings for decision to support.
There is a line, there is a line in the uh, in the staff report said that the employees will use the uh, the, the parking garage.
So they intend to use it, but the, the requirement to actually require that of the business owner to purchase them, I think those are two different.
Okay, gotcha.
How long has this retail establishment not been used? How many years?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's been vacant for a while. Um, I don't know the exact amount of time. Previous to the IMAX Theater, it was vacant for quite a while. You might remember the old carousel. That used to be in the building and.
It was before COVID.
We had game centers. Um, yeah, the IMAX Theater concept didn't really seem to work on Canary Row. So we're starting to see. As you know, we have Tipsy Putt just went in. We have Oscar's Playground going in. Um, above the um. Where the old Bluefin was located. So we're starting to see. I, I think a really fun um, concept emerging Canary Row. That people might have some, in addition to eating and seeing the aquarium, they might have some other experiences.
Okay, is that?
My staff report.
Any questions from Commissioners for?
I guess, Kim, uh, thanks following up with Sharon Dwight's um, letter and the staff recommendation. Uh, cause we have had. Two recent sort of Canary Row of new entertainment. Applications recently. And I don't, did we require any special parking? Or, you know, uh, this paid parking for employees on those projects?
We didn't. And so. As I mentioned, this would be, you know, a slightly new approach. To require that, um, you know, we've sort of looked at changing one business for the other. As just being sort of change of use. Um, and not requiring. You know, additional employee parking.
This, uh, the number of employees that they propose at this, uh. Is it more than, or I don't, this is a hard question to answer maybe, but to the IMAX, how many employees do they have?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mike, Stephen?
I, I was waiting for the applicant.
Would it be possible to go back? Let's say that these uh, recre- indoor recreational or X outside recreational activities become very popular. Would it be possible to go backward now and go to the uh, the golf and the other things that have been recently approved and ask them? The same thing. You know, get your employees, uh, pay for their parking in the parking.
You can't go back retroactively. Once a use permit's been approved, you can verify compliance.
Okay.
Conditions of approval. So if you were imposing this condition, it would be probably going forward that you would be looking for this type of. Uh, agreement and it is a typically a written contract between the city and the. The business owner that they'll provide this parking. Um, and you know, there's a number of forms that could come in.
Aren't we crying foul before we're hurt here? Cause we don't know that uh, that those people will be parking on the street uphill.
Well, and this building's been there before.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been there a long time before a lot of other uses. So that's what we need to grapple with.
Okay, I think uh, this applicant here to make a presentation.
They're, they're online.
They're online, okay.
I can go ahead and ask the applicant, um, allow them to talk. I see Mark Lucas on the line.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I, I don't have a presentation per se to present to you all today. I am the one that provided the documents that were in the staff report. Um, I just didn't see the video. That Christopher had from the manufacturer of the ride and. My discussions with Christopher, he was gonna insert that into the uh, the staff report. But I'm available to answer any questions um, regarding the ride system itself or any of the. Operational features of the project.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
How many people at a time can be in a seat and watch the uh, show?
There's a total of thirty-nine seats on the ride system. And then in the pre-show area, we will be able to preload. Uh, thirty-nine people in the queuing process coming into. The ride area, but there will be no more than thirty-nine at one given time while the ride is in operation.
Thank you.
Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I was gonna assure him that uh, that the uh, that the YouTube video was in the staff report. And it was very interesting.
Okay, great. I just, I couldn't tell from the presentation. So I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to view it, cause it's a. A good representation of what we're installing.
Yeah. Okay, any other Commissioners' questions for Mark?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In your application, you implied that your employees will be parking in the parking garage. Is that correct?
Could you, could you raise your voice a little bit? It was really hard to hear you.
In your application, you imply that your employees will be parking in the parking garage. Is that correct?
Ye- yes, we are going to be getting the permit for them to, to park in the, the parking garage. That's where we want them to park. And at any given time, really, there's gonna be six to ten employees on site. As, as traffic increases, it may get up to twenty, but. For day-to-day operations to operate the ride and the attraction safely, the range of six to ten i- is typically what will be on site.
Understanding that parking is a finite resource. I, I appreciate that. So I, I assume you would have no objection to that being a condition to your permit?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do we have anybody online? Well, we can open up the public hearing now. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
There are five attendees. Um, I'll go ahead and remind people how they can participate. To join the meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three, five six eight, eight eight six four, then enter the webinar ID. Today's webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name they've typed into Zoom. There are currently no hands raised.
No hands raised. Anyone from the audience here? No, doesn't look like it. So I think we can bring this back to, I mean, close the public. Bring back to Commissioners for deliberations. Who would like to start? Yes, Mike?
This is, this is very much like uh, like the, the Disneyland ride Star Tours. We did, how long? Um, it might still be running, but it was uh, very entertaining. The question is whether it's gonna be very entertaining on Canary Row.
Well, Canary Row's kind of going through a little change right now.
Now, fully in support of it.
Okay, Jerry?
I, I did see the video um, that was in the staff report. And it, it looks great. I mean, it looks um. It looks like fun and uh, this is another really substantial uh. Commercial space down in that area that, that is uh, a big ugly missing tooth in the smile of Canary Row. So it's really nice to uh. See somebody filling it.
Uh, Stephen or Mike?
Stephen, I agree with you.
Mike, I think you're on mute.
I'd like to thank the entrepreneurs that are looking at this chapter of Canary Row. I, I really think of this as a, they're thinking. Beyond the, the lines of the, on the page and here, and I, I like that. Thank you.
Good, I, I, you know, I'm some, in support of the project. I do think the parking is an issue that's gonna be coming up more and more. As our businesses become more successful down in Canary Row, I do see people kind of walking down the hill. Um, and we do have parking issues already up on the hill. Um, so I'm glad to see the applicant is willing to uh, provide some parking passes for his employee. Can I have a motion for approval?
Well, let's talk a little bit more about the uh, parking.
Yeah.
Uh, the, cause I think staff has made the case that this is sort of a, you know, uh. It isn't like there's an additional parking load being added to this district with this project. Cause there was an existing uh, several use there before with similar levels of employee parking. So it doesn't, and, and also we've had several previous applicants that uh. We didn't require uh, special fees or, or parking uh, requirements for the employees. So it, it, does anybody think that we should change um, policy in regards to employee parking?
I personally do.
Okay.
You know, that's just my opinion. I, I think. You know, we have a situation here where the applicant has agreed to provide parking passes. It seems like that we could clarify that in our motion. And uh, you know, move on with this.
Should we have a, a specific? I- i- is, is there a uh? Did you suggest a uh, language of this extra condition?
Uh, Mike, you have something since you brought it up?
Well. In this specific, specific case. I, like I said, the fact that the gentleman. Agreed to it and suggested it in the first place. I don't know, I will leave the wording to, to our community director here.
Why don't we ask Mr. Lucas?
I'm sorry?
Ask Mr. Lucas what he suggests.
Well, I'd like to start maybe with Kim. Um, we have an applicant that has agreed to provide this parking and we would like to acknowledge that in our motion. How would we do that?
Um, I would suggest we, uh, you add a condition of approval that the. The business owner shall purchase. Um, parking passes um, for the employees. And whether or not the city gives those in the parking garage or where in Canary Row, leave that up to our parking superintendent and them to work out, but. I would assume it's in the parking garage.
Okay.
How many employees in full time or part time or? You know, he said this number of employees he has is gonna vary. As little as six full time to twenty, I guess during busy season.
So if you remember, we do have part-time. Parking passes that are available. We have annual, I imagine nobody would buy annual. Parking passes probably quarterly or um, the part-time depending on the employees.
Well, I think we should make it specific enough so that it's enforceable. If we're gonna do it, make it enforceable.
On the other hand, since you're going to have transient employees, keeping it general. That the business owner shall purchase parking passes for the employees. Leaves it up to him what kind of parking passes he's gonna purchase. He's working day-to-day or somebody who's working full-time for six months. I mean, you could go both ways on that one, I think.
The applicant does have his.
Well, what we're guessing is this is going to be a very popular uh, activity and that parking passes will be needed.
So Kim, can, could you, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but. Can you provide, let's say, for instance, uh, the added condition was for six. Uh, parking passes to be purchased. Can you? Could you provide a, a, a sort of a draft uh, language of this condition?
So I would just recommend something simple as first of all, assigning responsibility, the business owner. Shall purchase parking passes for um, business, for employees and leave it at that. If you want to be more specific, it's, you could say, you know, the preferred location is in the Canary Row parking.
I'm gonna understand it's Kim, it has to be simple.
Yeah, so I would recommend my first version.
I do too.
But it's up to you.
Okay, so we wouldn't be specifying the number of employees or whether they're part-time, forever, right, okay.
Okay, so I do see the applicants' hands raised. You may wanna get their feedback on the condition.
He has to say.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to, to iterate the parking requirement. I- is it necessary that it becomes a condition of approval? The, the only thing that, that makes me a bit nervous about is that it, it's a precedent. And I, I don't want us or our organization to be the cause for future business operators coming in. I just don't know how that works in your process, because it sounds like. We're discussing something that maybe hasn't been set up. You know, from a legal perspective yet, and I just don't know how to really. W- we certainly are going to pay for passes for our employees in the parking structure, but to make it and attach it as a condition of approval. Uh, it, it, are there, is there another step here that I'm missing?
Well, uh, let me just say this, you know, in my personal opinion, I'm one of six, seven people here. A, a problem has been identified. I believe it to be a real problem. I've lived in that neighborhood and, and all the people that work down on Canary Row park up in there. Compounding parking problem up there. So have a, a problem and at what point do you start to deal with the problem, to start to uh, solve it? And I suppose there's never really a good time, but we have to start somewhere. We need to put in the thought process for. Uh, future applicants perhaps, um, some sort of methodology or something that we could, we could use to guide us in the future. If my fellow Commissioners aren't ready to make that kind of. Amendment to an approach, right now, I, I just, I do think this is gonna come back again in the future and we need to be prepared to deal with it.
I think it is a good idea. And I would certainly be willing to support that.
I, I would too. And I, I believe there have been previous um. Conditional, you know, conditions on use permits for employee parking, haven't there?
So we've definitely where the applicant has come forth with conditions of approval. So I'm thinking about um, the Mad Dog Bikes down in. Um, the V A F Zone and they were able to ob- uh, obtain a. Commitment from, because it's part of that hotel development, that employees were gonna park there as part of that. Use permit. So there have been periodic discussions. You know, the Monterey Bay Aquarium, when it was built, actually um, re- is required to submit an annual transportation. Report to the city and they help fund the trolley. So there's been. I would say more recently, we have not required it for change of use. From one restaurant to another or something like. One commercial recreation to another commercial recreation use. Been requiring that.
That the, the city has. Over the last few years and into more and more issues where parking has been reduced. Where parking has become more and more of an issue and it is, we're not gonna be able to grow more parking. Uh, we, we seem to be reducing it and. Building parking garages is a very expensive proposition. So I don't see a way around. Having some better mechanism for parking employees. And which we know is a, is a resource that we have some control over, that we don't over the torch.
Probably will come up um, from a policy perspective, although. This site uh, that with the business was not in within our coastal zone. Um, we're actually currently, we almost have a complete draft of our land use plan. And this, that we'll be presenting to you hopefully fairly soon. And then um, the zoning regulations that'll go with that. So the Canary Row parking garage is in our coastal zone. And I think we will learn a lot more about what the Coastal Commission's expectations are for that. Parking garage that was built many years ago. So. I do think we will forthcoming have probably considerable discussions about parking in Canary Row. And I guess in our minds, there's been a pretty fairly big distinction between reuse of existing commercial spaces. Versus brand new construction, brand new construction. Probably like you remember for three hundred Canary Row, we required it. versus brand new construction. Brand new construction, probably like you remember for 300 Canary Row, we required it an uphill parking lot. Um, you might remem- and if Ocean View Plaza ever gets built, it comes with a brand new parking garage. That's been a little bit different and um, sometimes just reuse of existing spaces.
Yeah. Okay, uh, is, is there anyone willing to make a motion on this?
We should probably restate the motion.
Okay.
Right.
Well, we're looking for a motion, my glasses on here. To, uh, to consider, uh, wait, where is our motion?
You want me to make one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution.
There we go.
Approving use permit application UP 220106 to allow a commercial recreation and entertainment use at 640 Wave Street. With the conditions of approval as stated and one added condition of approval, the business owner shall purchase parking class, uh, passes for his employees.
That good.
The motion and a second further discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, uh, with the condition of the business owner purchasing parking passes for employees with a vote of six. The decision is appealable to the, uh, city council. Um, applications are available at the planning office or online.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Okay, we can move on to item number four on the agenda, which is to recommend to the city council that the capital improvement program projects for 2022, 23 fiscal year are consistent with the general plan, area plans, master plans, coastal plans, traffic calming plans, and move Monterey multimodal plan. This is exempt from CEQA. Who's, okay, here we go.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christie Savdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. I'm here along with public works staff, Tom Hardy, Senior Engineer, and Andrea Rennie, um, interim Public Works Director who was on the line. So we have the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022, 23. Um, staff is recommending consistency of these, um, program projects with the general plan, area specific plans, master plans, coastal plans, traffic calming plans, and multimodal mobility plans. So as you'll see in Exhibit A to the resolution, um, staff has conducted a consistency analysis, um, ensuring that the CIP projects are consistent with on the overall general plan, um, policies and the area and specific plans, the ones listed here. Uh, the Park and Recreation Master Plan, the city's multimodal plan, coastal plans, and traffic calming plans. And, uh, we have verified that they are consistent with all of those plans. We also, uh, reviewed each of the project descriptions for these projects and made a determination on if they're exempt from CEQA, if they might require further review, um, and potentially may require, um, an exempt, or may require an initial study. So the three types of exemptions, um, that we found applicable to these projects include existing facilities, which are repairs, maintenance, minor alterations of existing public structures involving, involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use. A replacement or reconstruction of existing structures and facilities where the new structure will be located on the same site as the structure replaced and will have substantially the same purpose and capacity as a structure replaced. And information collection, um, basic data collection, research, and resource evaluation activities. So overall, there are 41 CIP projects. We have found that 16 projects, um, can be exempt from CEQA. 22 projects need further review to determine if they can be exempt or if they require initial study. Uh, some of those may require, for example, um, archaeological, um, studies. Uh, three projects already have, uh, approved, uh, final initial studies. And we will list those out. So here are the 16 CEQA exempt projects and I have Tom Hardy here that can kind of give an overview of some of these projects.
Thank you, Christie. And, um, I guess I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions that you may have about any of these projects. Um, these are the, we've listed them in order. These would be the 16 exempt projects, um, that we have. And if any one of these, if you're interested in discussing any one of them, they range from, uh, replacing the downtown trash receptacles. We're doing the parking lot resurfacing down at the, the Marina Lot, we call that, down at the waterfront. Um, it's sign replacement, it's sewer maintenance, um, the fog inspection there, that's an unusual one, but that stands for fat, oil, and grease. So this is, uh, typically just an inspection that's done usually at restaurants just to make sure that they're not, that they're handling their, um, oils and greases properly. Uh, we have parking garage repairs and a number of, um, upgrades to the, the parking facilities. Um, there's another one. I'm looking just at the ALPR for enforcement scooters. That's an automatic or automated license plate reader. So on the enforcement scooters, they have them. Um, they'll, they'll read the plates as they go by. Then I think, oh, the other unusual one I think is the sewer root foaming project. Doesn't really make any sense unless you know what it is, but it's just to clean out the sewer lines, um, throughout the year. Or if there's any other questions that you might have on this. Yes, sir.
Um, how, how did the, how did these projects differ from NCIP projects?
There, that's a great question. These are the capital improvement projects. So the city is actually responsible for doing these projects. We have, uh, the funding is assigned. We receive it. Um, we are working still with the finance department now to get the final number of funding that we'll receive for this year. But this, these would be projects that put, well, generally public works, but the city is proposing these projects. And the Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program, the NCIP, all of those projects are submitted by residents of the city. And the funding comes from the, uh, a, a portion of the transient occupancy tax, the TOT revenue. And so just the funding is different.
So this is coming from the, the CIP or coming from the general fund then?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a couple. Go ahead.
You, I see a fire station 13 here. I didn't know we had a perpition 13.
Yeah, neither did I. But, um, that's, this is the one that's over on Montecito, right next to Montecito Park. It's also called Fire Station Three. So it's, it's that one. They have a, a tower that they have used in the past to practice. It's, uh, I think it's two stories, but, um, it needs repair. And it's been determined that it's probably best to take it down at this point. So we'll study that and come up with a plan um, for removing some or all of that, that tower.
Andrea Rennie's hand is raised as well, so she may want to provide some input here.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I'm Andrea Rennie. I'm interim Public Works Director, new to the role, not new to the city. I also want to add that the CIP process is an interactive process between the different departments in the city where public works works with, uh, Fire Department, Police Department, Parks and Recreation. And we assess the needs and we also try to balance that with the, the critical repairs and the funding that we have. The other, um, we also have some of these things. They're not all general fund funded. We have parking funds, we have SB one, gas tax, measure X, measure P, measure S. So there are different sources of funding for all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two, couple of questions.
Yes.
Page, uh, one on the list, um, the pavement reconstruction and resurfacing, a million, nine ninety-five, repair of city streets, da-da-da. How come that isn't on measure S?
Yes, so the, the slide that we're looking at right now, I'm going off the slide, um, is just for the exempt projects. And if we go to the next, the next slide, well, actually list the projects that, um.
Sure, why don't I continue?
Okay.
So there are 22 other projects where further review is going to be required to determine, um, whether it can be exempt or whether we need to move forward with an initial study. Okay.
Okay, other questions?
Uh, I'm sorry to, uh, th- th- this question is really about these particular projects, but what is that building that was built right next to the tunnel in the, in the, uh, Canary Row parking lot area? I never saw any discussion of that. It's such a substantial structure.
Is it the, the waterfront parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the, um, the trash that's, we called it the Waste Resources Recovery Facility, but it's where the, um, it's a new, um, trash compactor building. So the trash that comes from the Fisherman's Wharf is being relocated. We used to have a compactor at the end of the wharf that caused a lot of damage to the understructure, that just the wharf. It was heavy trucks all the time. So now it's been relocated off to the, this kind of corner of the parking area over there. And so it's, it's really for the trash collection.
Great. You know, it's not on the list, so sorry.
Yes, no, it's completed.
And that, was that done through the CIP?
Yes, it was. Yes. And, uh, finished about a year ago.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's such a amazing kind of a building. It's, uh, anyways, I'm sorry to distract.
Yeah, what's really cool is they have a little train to pick up the trash on the wharf and bring it down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, very cool.
Okay, uh, any other questions of staff?
Just one, uh, quickie. On the resolution, uh, Christie, on page three, you probably want to change the r- resolution to read, uh, capital improvement program instead of neighborhood and commu- community improvement.
Thank you. Sorry, we didn't catch that. Appreciate that.
Those are the question.
Okay, we'll bring it back to commissioners for.
We had one more slide.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry.
So in addition to the exempt projects and ones that require further review, we have three projects where an initial study mitigated negative declaration was already approved. Um, so the next step would be approving the projects and funding them. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending to the city council that the CIP projects for the 2022, 23 fiscal year are consistent with the general plan, area plan, and specific plans, master plans, coastal plans, and traffic calming plans, and the multimodal plan.
Okay. Thank you, Christie.
Sure.
Okay, commissioner comments?
Seems reasonable.
No comments? Uh, can I have a motion?
Any public comment?
I'm sorry, is there anybody?
There are two attendees. There are no hands raised.
No hand raise. Okay. Keep forgetting about our friends online. Sorry about that.
I move approval.
Okay, we have motion to approve second. It was, both our mics said second, right?
Mike and Mike.
Mike and Mike. Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with a vote of six.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Onto number five. Inter updates to submittal checklists and public handouts for variance applications and fence standards. This is, uh, not a project under CEQA. And, okay. Staff report. Uh, bringing it up.
Nice.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Buggerd. I'm an associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. And today, uh, I have a presentation on the variance and fence handouts that the planning office gives out to guests or go online. Uh, there are proposed updates to these checklists at today's meeting, August 23rd, 2022. The recommendation from staff is that the planning commission adopt proposed amendments to submittal checklist and public handouts for variance applications and fence standards. Uh, this applies to the two handouts that will be talked about today. Some background as to why this is being presented before you. Uh, submittal requirements for variance applications shall be maintained by the planning division and shall be available, be made available to the public at City Hall and shall be subject to review and oversight by the planning commission. So updates to those checklists need to be reviewed through this hearing body. For some background, the variance handout and fence handout both includes middle requirements for variance-related applications. The variance handout was last updated in 2016 and the fence handout was last updated at least 20 years ago. Could not find an actual date. It is a little dated. The previous fence handout is here. It is, it needed updates to reflect current code and the, uh, the variance, variance requirements associated with variance findings for fences. So the variance handout itself needed some additional information. So some of the information that was included in here was to incorporate code section numbers. If there's a question with a portion of the information that's included, you can go to the section number that is now in the document. It also now includes the fence variance findings. The previous version did not include that. It also reflects the new electronics submittal process. Previously, uh, it was requested that plans be printed and on certain sized paper and now they are all submitted electronically, so PDF format. There were updates to the website links, especially with the new city website where all the links changed. And then at the very end, uh, there was mention of possibly requiring a title report, especially for anything having to do with easements, or maybe there were utilities nearby. It's come up in projects and we suggested including it in this handout because it's been an issue in the past and we'd like to resolve that going forward. Also, the fence standards handout got a big facelift. As stated before, it includes the fence variance findings. We updated the image describing the fence locations. If you're talking about a side fence in the front yard, or you're on a reverse corner lot or a corner lot, this picture trying to capture an example of each of those types of properties that are within the city. The handout includes the maximum fence heights allowed in the different zoning districts. It incorporates the code references similar to the previous document and they are each linked as well. And it also includes the process for a fence at a historic property. So with that, the combination from staff is that the planning commission adopt proposed amendments to the submittal checklist and public handouts for variance applications and fence standards.
And I do want to clarify, this does not require city council action. It would be a planning commission final decision.
That is a type of apologies.
Uh, any questions for staff? Yes, Mike?
Um, was there any effort make, make this simpler? It looks like it, it's overly, you know, doubly complicated to, to just get a, a simple variance. Requiring, requiring, um, uh, the, the view of the, of the, the lot across the street, down the block. It's just, it's just really, really, th- this has got to be almost impossible to pass.
Are you saying that the graphic on the fence handout is not helpful?
No, no, that is very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, because you, a lot of us, a lot of us like me wouldn't know what the heck of a reverse corner lot was. But, uh, this, this seems very, very complicated. And, uh, I, I would, I would see something simple.
And was that in reference to both handouts or to one in particular?
It's, it's all, it's all daunting. Yeah, if, if, if I was reading that, I would, I would say, oh my. First get an architect, then, 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 then a, um, a surveyor and then. First get an architect, then, 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 then a, um, a surveyor, and then, and then a lawyer. It's just, it's just very, very complicated. I'm, I'm just speaking for the folks here.
I will say, if something's not on your submittal checklist, you can't require it later. So our submittal checklist tend to be, usually people sit down with the planner and they go through it, and we say, yes, that's required, no, it's not, and we just sort of go through it. So it does, it gets as specific as, we want your project address and assessed or parcel number on your plans. We want the applicant's name, address, and daytime telephone number. So it is a, and we basically use that checklist when we are looking to see if a plan is deemed complete. If it's not on our checklist, then we usually can't require it. So, um, we find this very helpful, um, to be a detailed checklist, because it conveys exactly what we want to see on the plans. Um, we want the architect, designers, engineers, address, telephone number, and stamp if necessary. Usually only architects or engineers stamp. But if we don't have that, then, um, the plans will be incomplete and, and couldn't go forward. So I actually, well, I, I probably differ in my opinion from you. I, I think it's necessary, but I'll just leave it at that.
Is there an online application that accompanies this list of standards?
So we have a two-page online application that's simple. What's your, what's the applicant's name? What's the, um, property owner's name? And there's a sentence, this is what my project is.
Uh huh.
And then you flip it over, and there's an indemnification agreement. And the indemnification agreement basically says that the City of Monterey is sued on your project, and this came from experience, then you will cover our court costs for your project. So, for example, if you're building a new house in Monterey, and we go through the entitlement process and we approve that house, and then your neighbor sues the City of Monterey, the thought is on that indemnification agreement, the City of Monterey should not have to pick up those court costs or the public and potential, and that the applicant agrees to indemnify the city. So we've been doing that since at least 2004, where we didn't have that indemnification clause. And the city ended up having to pay the court costs for that, um, defense of that land use approval. So it's a pretty simple form. You have to put your name and your date, but it's about a page-long signing for the indemnification.
Okay.
But that doesn't get you a variance. Has this been run past the city attorney?
Yeah, the handout? No. We updated our current handouts.
Okay, what I'd also like to find out is, uh, what do our two architects on the Planning Commission have to say about this?
I was just sitting here thinking, God, I fill out forms all the time, so when I look at what we've done here, I don't see it as being, you know, overwhelming.
Yeah, I, I have the same response.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mike.
On the, uh, in the initial part, we're talking about fence standard. And it says, do you need a permit? It says that any fence exceeding seven feet needs a variant or permit, and I found that a little misleading when everything else talks about six foot. That you can only go six foot, so why is there this discrepancy between seven and six foot? That's, that's a big difference in a fence.
Yeah, uh, so there is one district IR which allows up to eight feet tall, eight-foot-tall fences. And in the case that a variance is allowed for, uh, a fence over six feet and it exceeds seven feet, the building department starts requiring safety review, construction-related. At seven feet, it gets kicked over to the Building and Safety Department.
Didn't we have a case involving Stradlin course? Uh, that we allowed them to go up to six feet?
Yes, we, we also have, um, quite frequently, we have, especially in New Monterey and some of our hillside neighborhoods, we have combined retaining wall and fences. So what this handout is trying to tell you, um, is, you know, there's sort of the design requirements predominantly four and six feet for the residential neighborhood. But if we go through this process and the Planning Commission or zoning administrator grant a variance up to seven feet, that fence requires a building permit. So the building, uh, you don't have to get a building permit under seven feet, but over seven feet you do. And so that's trying to explain that as you build taller, the, the building, there's building code requirements.
That's my point. I don't think it's clear, Kim. It just, it just, it starts with that seven-foot figure, and then after that, it just mentions no, no more than six foot. I'm just suggesting that you need, that thing needs to be fixed a little bit. Uh, the second one I, I have, the issue I have. Is I was, it was explained to me years ago in the City of Monterey, you have the front of your house. And that's, the city has designated one portion of it as the front. Well, those are typically four-foot fences. Side yards and backyards are typically can be six foot. Is that correct?
With the exception of reverse corner lots. So maybe Matthew can bring up the graphic, so we can show you. And on this graphic, it shows you a traditional corner-to-corner lot where the, the backyards match each other. And then it shows you, um, if you can bring up that graphic and just walk people through what a reverse corner lot is.
Back to page seventy.
Yeah. Oh, I think it's just in this handout. Oh, it wasn't in your presentation? Okay.
We're speaking of this one?
Yep.
Yep.
We use that all the time at the front counter. So if you are one of those people that have a corner lot versus a reverse corner lot, it explains the difference.
Well, the reason I ask is that, and I don't see it like, uh, here. I can't even see what's on your board there.
Very.
But bingo.
So let me just walk you through this. So let's look at an interior lot. That's the easy one. So if you're an interior lot and the, across your front yard setback, which is typically fifteen feet from your front yard, you're limited to four feet. And then beyond that, you can go up to six feet. And there's a, there's a chart that, you know, these numbers correspond to that, so it explains that. So that's an interior lot. Now let's go to a straight corner lot, which is on the far right. That's pretty straightforward as well. It's four feet across the front yard setback, and then along the side, you can jump up to six feet. The rear can be six feet, and the interior side can be six feet. Where it gets confusing is on the reverse corner lot. And we have, you can think of, well, actually, it shows up a lot in New Monterey and Old Town. And what our regulations say is that if you're a reverse corner lot, that shortest-most frontage facing the street is four feet. And then it goes up to, um, it's four feet along the side property line facing the street. And the reasoning behind that is that if you allowed them to have six feet there, then their neighbor next door would have four feet, and they would have six feet, and it looks wrong in the field. And so this has been our fence standard forever, but it's really hard to explain. So I swear every single time we print a map and we color it in, here's where you can do four feet, and here's where you can do six. Once you get outside of that corner side yard setback, you can jump up to six feet. So what we find most people do is they will create, their house will have a front door facing where the A is, and then the side yard will face the D, and then they'll have, they'll push back their fence so they can, it's out of that, um, that reverse corner side yard area. So it's, um, I swear fences are sometimes harder to explain than, um, house remodels, but.
Yeah.
I think this is what Kim described, and the material describes here is, there's a certain amount of discretion necessary to accomplish the mission. And I appreciate that. In one section, though, you need to talk about the discretion. And it, and it's applied to, in this case, the Community Development Director, that she may have the discretion to, I don't know, I, I don't have it before me, Kim. Explain what that discretion is.
Sure, um, some of the discretion I have under the code is, um, if there's a confusion where the front yard is of a property, I have, uh, the code enables me the ability to define the front yard. So we have sometimes triangular lots. We have, um, you know, if you think of a, maybe a large arc with two, well, what's your front side and rear? So what we do is we go out into the field, we figure it out, and then we apply the regulations. Okay, this would be your front, this would be your side, and this would be your rear. So there is some amount of discretion because not everything comes in a perfect rectangle. And so we do our best to, um, apply the intent of the regulation when we have these really unique parcels.
Thank you. Uh, so I have, there is one area that, in my mind, it just needs to be rephrased.
Okay.
Talk about in the variance checklist, and it says, submittal of any sub, no, submissive, submittal of any submittal items. That just sounds awkward. It's the number two, it's a footnote.
Two. Yeah, that does sound awkward. Where are you seeing that? Is that on?
It's a footnote, number two footnote. You see that?
Page?
Well, I don't get pages in a packet. I don't get a packet, so there's no pages numbers.
Oh dear.
I think Matthew knows where it's at. We'll find it and change it.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, Terry's next.
Yes, so, um, there's a reference, uh, thanks Matthew, to the, uh, the title report, maybe requirement. Can you describe that?
Yeah, so in the case that, there's some properties where, uh, you, utility easements are immediately next to the property or run through the property. For instance, there was, there was one recently where, uh, they were cutting into a slope in their backyard, and it turns out that there's a utility easement that goes under there, so knowing whether or not there's a sewage line or the ownership of that area, or if it needs to be preserved for access. That's the reason that it's included as maybe required.
Okay, so it's a case-by-case thing? And, uh,
Right.
by case basis, and that, that's for variances, or is that for fence variances or just regular variances?
So variances, variances are, uh, a category unto themselves, and if it happens to be a fence that you're getting a variance for, you still go through the variance process, you just have the additional findings that we always require of a fence variance.
Okay.
So when it comes to these handouts,
Right.
the, the checklist that you would do for the variance would, even if it's a fence, would still be, be, uh, just the variance.
Okay, right.
Handout.
But we most likely for a fence will not require a title report. I recently worked on a commercial project, and unb, I mean, the architectural drawings came in, you know, by a licensed architect. And, um, through the public comment process, PG&E shared they had a major transmission line through the property in the parking lot to the right that nobody knew about. So, um, I think on these bigger projects that we work on with variances and use permits, we'll start looking at obtaining title reports, the challenge with them. So like my concern, let me just put my concern out there, it costs about $2,000 to get a title report. And that will increase the cost of applications. Um, and so most of the time, we probably won't require it, except for, like, I'm thinking these bigger commercial projects.
It's, it's such a useful tool. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you, Michael. Let's see, is there anybody waving their hand over there?
There are still two attendees. There are no hands raised.
Okay, and nobody in the chamber?
Need to get involved.
Yeah. Okay, so we've had our staff report, we've had our public um, comments, nobody available. So can we take it back to commissioners for discussion, and hopefully someone will make a motion?
Well, I think that this is basically an update of an existing policy. But as Mike said, there's a lot of little black mouse tracks all over the, uh, two face pages, and I think this happens in a lot of businesses where you're updating prior documents that were written 20 years ago, and a new graphic face on it that presents something that's simpler. You know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, and we know how long and hard the people who work for the city work. But something that presents a simpler, uh, face, at least initially, and, uh, would probably be more effective. I like the fact that we're so online now that every time somebody has a question, the URL is embedded in the narrative, which is a really good thing. So I don't, you might consider a face sheet that is the application, or, you know, or this nice illustration, or something that kind of draw the person in, move things around.
Anyone else coming?
I found it, uh, trying to make complex things simple is makes them even more complex.
Okay, fair enough.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'm not gonna make the motion.
Well, I'll make a motion, um, to, um, approve the, um, updates to the submittal checklists and public handouts for variance applications and fence standard per the staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on that.
Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
No.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with a vote of five.
Okay, moving on, item number six. Confirm annual appointments for chair and vice chair due to resignation of Commissioner Reed.
That's you, Dan.
Is that?
That's you, Steve.
So the, the new nominees, based on the, um, rotation schedule, if they do so, accept would be, um, Commissioner Fletcher would become our chair for until July, I believe it's first, um, 2023, and Stephen Milich would become our vice chair, if you do accept.
I accept. How about you, Stephen?
Oh, you're a veteran.
Okay, there we go. Do we vote on it?
You can, sure.
We have a vote, roll call vote?
Sure. Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
He said yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Milich?
I'm in favor of me, and also, yes.
Okay, um, that motion carries with a vote of six.
Thank you. Onto Commissioner comments. Any comments? Uh, informational reports and staff comments?
Actually, actually, I'm, Chairman, I'll, I'll go ahead with a couple of comments.
Okay.
Throughout this meeting, and most of our meetings, we keep hearing comments regarding CEQA. And I keep seeing more and more agencies and general discussion that CEQA, as of, we, California has audit, needs to be more transparent discussion on improving it because of the sheer cost of CEQA. And I thought that was interesting that we're seeing, hopefully, a sea change. The other part is that one of the things that we saw today, when it talks about appeals, and that there are normally fees associated with appeals. I always thought that as part of our way of doing business, we have a right to appeal decisions, and I didn't see anything in the constitution that talked about fees to do so for due process. How is it justified? I, we have an attorney here and we have Kim that's used to it. I I don't understand it.
Well, Mike, as soon as I get on the Supreme Court, I'll issue a written opinion on.
Yeah, I I will say how fees are established by the city. Um so in our municipal code. Um, for every fee the city charges, and these are adopted by ordinance, there's a percent recovery. For almost all of development applications, it's a hundred percent fee recovery established by the city council. And this ordinance, there's a couple of exceptions. The city council waived fees for historic um rezones. Historic permits and Mills Act applications, we used to charge a hundred percent, now we don't. Um and they um have consistently over the years only charged a thirty percent recovery rate for appeals. And um so that's established by ordinance by city council action. And um we update our fee schedule annually based on those percentage recoveries established in the municipal code.
I will give you a legal answer if you want it. The state doesn't allow local municipalities to make a profit on anything. So the fees that the city charges offsets actual costs incurred. Except when it comes to exercising one's constitutional rights. One can, may not be charged to exercise one's constitutional right. Uh and that basically is. Is your primer on the fees and governmental entities.
So appealing regarding as part of a due process, is that not a constitutional right?
Appealing what?
A decision by a body.
Not necessarily.
A governmental body?
Not necessarily. It has to do with due process, you know, and that's.
Exactly why I'm bringing up.
Well.
There's no appeal.
Now, what I would recommend.
Don't have time to talk about this.
Can we have a, a, the city?
No. This, this is, this is a law school class for four units for a full semester, you know, I. Con law goes for an entire year, Mike. And.
I understand, but Kim, go ahead.
You suggest?
Yeah, Commissioner Brassfield, um our city attorney um is always welcome to, if you want to give her a call. Um email she'll get back to you. And if you have questions, she'll be happy to answer it. But I will say it's a very established, codified. Uh approach to establishing fees and you can find it in our municipal code.
I, believe it or not, I do have some experience of that, but I also got fees waived in the past.
Well, rest assured, Michael, my answer to you will not be just with a daily.
But anyway, my, my last comment is I wanted to thank Erica. I thought she did a great job today.
Oh.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate that a lot.
Quick uh comment and question. Uh, Dr. Seth Stackfold absolutely echoed my thoughts on the bike trail.
I agree.
And uh we approved only level one. Maybe not even level two of the uh motorbikes. And then the city council approved the level two, but not level three. And it's a zoo out there and he is so correct. It was just lucky it wasn't a three-year-old child or something that would not have been able to withstand that kind of.
Discuss that at the time.
Absolutely. So now we have an ordinance that can't be really enforced unless there are cameras. On uh the intersections and.
Read the cameras, alright.
The cameras.
Read our cameras.
Well, rather than having a a specific discussion, why don't we agendize a discussion?
And bring it back.
I totally agree. I think it's something we should look at.
Can it be brought back from the city council decision?
So zoning ordinances um under the purview, like the zoning regulations. Can be considered by the planning commission. The speed and the the recreation trail enforcement is at the council level. Um and there are state laws about speeds and class one and class two bikes have to be allowed on certain. Trails. So that type of discussion, I think, is most appropriate at the city council. It may be that the chair writes a letter to the mayor and attaches the letter. And says, we've received this. The city council may want to take up the issue of speeds on the recreation trail and see what can be done. If if that's assigned, it will most likely go to our public works department and the city traffic engineer and police department.
Well, certainly, the Dr. Stackfold should make a present, his same presentation.
And I'll I'll give him a call and let him know that.
Um, because it's clearly an enforcement problem down there on the red trail.
Big time.
Yeah, I've always been concerned about that.
I've already asked, I've already asked some discussion for council on a speed limit on red trail.
Okay.
Which is the easiest to enforce. We have them on the streets. Yeah.
I think the police, the police bikes that runs trail are ones. Uh I think they're pedals, they're not mechanical. So I don't know how, if they're on the trail policing speeding bikes, they can catch an accident.
Actually, they have electric motorcycles and they can use it if necessary. They can also use radar. And it's called a team approach, but one ahead and one using the radar. And it's harder to beat motor.
I defer, I defer to you.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes.
So I wanted to uh thank Hudson Reed for his years of service in planning mission. He was uh awesome. You know, he was so smart, so fast. He was really intimidating at first for me. I. I just couldn't keep up with him. But af- after a while I did and and I found him to be so. Um, you know, uh with with Steve, you know, the two of them having this this legal sort of uh lines on the commission was so helpful. And and he was really great, so he will be missed.
I I agree. Rock of reason that sat down on the end there.
Yeah.
So, okay, uh are we ready for planning office update? Is there anything?
Yes, I do have an update. Um things are shifting regarding the August twenty-third agenda.
Okay.
In the afternoon, we just had an application go complete for a change out of a wireless facility on the three fifty by principal above the Marriott. So we will be looking at the use permit in the four o'clock section. And then we'll be um reviewing the wireless ordinance and responding to your questions and direction in the evening session. So the Anita Street project, we're going to postpone to another meeting and the objective design standards. Um will probably be the second meeting in September, and that's regarding SB thirty-five. We we will lose some discretionary ability over projects because we have not meet up, met our regional housing needs allocation numbers. So it's a checklist to review projects against in the downtown and lighthouse areas.
Okay. Did you say August twenty-third?
I meant September.
September twenty-third?
Okay.
Yeah, so uh oh. I am completely off in my dates. Let me just look here. Next planning commission is September thirteen.
Okay.
And that will be the use permit for the wireless and then the evening will be the ordinance. And then on the twenty-seventh of September will be most likely the objective design standards. And if we're not done with wireless, it may get continued to that date or one more meeting. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Could we have the city attorney uh address Jean Roush's case?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, we've already, we received Ms. Rash's email today. It was forwarded to both our outside council and city attorney today. And um they'll be able to respond to that at the meet, our next meeting where we're talking about the wireless ordinance.
All right, this is, I think we're finished here. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Dan.
Adios.
Thank you for moving this right along.
I might get a boost of movement it too quickly.